I'm going to go ahead and call us to order and declare that we have a quorum of seven members present. Item C, presentation regarding elementary attendance boundary recommendations. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As you know, we're here to get feedback, community feedback regarding the recommended new attendance boundaries to take effect in August of 2019 for the opening, to accommodate the opening of Riverbend Elementary School, or the school district's 10th elementary. Not everybody may be on the same page, so we wanted to make sure we did a brief presentation about what the recommendation is. And so, Mr. Mike Martindale, Deputy Superintendent, Chief Financial Officer, will do a smaller presentation than what we saw on Monday, but following that, we'll open it up to comments. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Dr. Ely. And just to mention to our folks that if you want to speak here in a few minutes, the yellow cards are located in the foyer, and if you'll turn those in to Mrs. Horn right here, she will get everyone situated accordingly. Just want to take a few minutes, very brief relative to the information we shared on Monday evening, and just to remind everyone that entire presentation is located on our homepage, but it will be, it's much more specific relative to what I'm wanting to share with the group today prior to our public comments portion. Again, a reminder as to why exactly we're doing elementary boundaries. At this time, part of the 2015 bond package included over $24 million for College Station to add its 10th elementary school, for since then, the name of that 10th elementary is Riverbend Elementary School, and it's slated to open next August for the 1920 school year. Included just a quick look at our current elementary boundaries, that we currently have nine, so elementary 10, again, Riverbend, but just as a reference of our current boundaries for everyone to review. Lot of data on this particular slide, our capacity for each of the particular buildings. We utilize 85% as our lower end, 110% is our upper end in local policy FC, just for us to have some parameters to look at our campuses as we project out and look if we're utilizing capacity appropriately at our existing campuses. The information utilized from our demographer was enrollment data pulled from September the 4th, that was a couple of weeks into current school year. You can see in this particular column, that's the enrollment of all of our elementaries as of September the 4th. We've also calculated capacity numbers based off of those numbers. It helps us just identify particular areas of concern that we need to pay attention to as we establish our recommendation. College Hills, as you can see, is moving close to 110% currently. Greens Prairie is over. Underutilized, the most extreme or the lower end is Pebble Creek at 68% of our capacity. Others, just to take note of, Forest Ridge is at 105, of course, Creekview and Southwood Valley right at the 85% mark. This is projecting out with current campuses. As I've mentioned, College Hills, as you could see, it was already 109%, and will exceed the 110% capacity mark in the out years. Creekview was just under 85%. Forest Ridge was at 105% current, but you can see projecting significant growth there, which would place it over the 110% mark in the out years. Greens Prairie is already there. Pebble Creek, this was the 68% with the 423 currently. Of course, I mentioned Southwood Valley as well, tracking right around the 85% mark out with our current numbers. Based on that information, these were kind of our driving pieces or things we identified for concern. Obviously, we need to, we're opening Riverbend Elementary School, we need to get students zoned to our new elementary school. We're rolling 68% at Pebble Creek as far as current enrollment, so we need to build some capacity there. College Hills and Greens Prairie are tracking right at the 110%, if not beyond it now. Also, if you noticed, Forest Ridge gets there, not currently, but next year is projected. So, these were kind of our driving principles as we developed the current recommendation for next year. This is administration's recommended zones for 1920. Again, the presentation for Monday night is much more detailed, and I'm not going to go through all 30 slides here, but just real quickly, obviously, the brown is the proposed zone for Riverbend. This star, the red, are the elementary schools, so this is location of Riverbend. It's basically Wellburn Road, they're continuous right off of Wellburn Road, and I'll kind of highlight the changes here in just a few minutes on the next slide, but not near as detailed as Monday evening. There are no proposed changes to Southwood Valley. Riverbend, it will be drawing from six of our existing elementary schools, from South Knoll, Greens Prairie, Spring Creek, Rock Prairie, Creekview, and Forest Ridge. Basically, Riverbend is this entire area, contiguous area, gated kind of on the west side of Wellburn Road. Again, there are some areas, for example, here, this is currently Forest Ridge, 2818, this is where we're located now, Consolidated High School, Welsh, Southwest Parkway. Another area is here, the Edelweiss Gardens area, this is Graham Road, Victoria, Eagle, and here's 40 along Wellburn Road. So, those are the areas impacted as far as Riverbend's zone. There are three other areas to address some of the items that showed up in our projections. Recommending adjustment here, this area is currently zoned for College Hills Elementary, recommending that be rezoned to Pebble Creek. Also, in this particular area, is currently zoned at Forest Ridge, we recommend it to Spring Creek. This is Fitch, Victoria coming to Wallace Phillips, this is part of Castle Gate 1, right here is Spring Creek and Forest Ridge Elementaries. And of course, the last area of change, currently zoned for Forest Ridge or Greens Prairie, this is the Greens Prairie Reserve Development that's projected to come online. With those proposed zones, here are projected numbers out, it takes care of College Hills. Forest Ridge does go up over the 110% projected for one year, that could be one particular grade level working its way through the system. It gives us a capacity at Greens Prairie. Pebble Creek brings them up to speed, and this is assuming full development of the area southeast of Pebble Creek currently, brings Riverbend in at the 400 mark and gets us situated with space at Rock Prairie and Southwood Valley as well. So, if I remember correctly, for the 1920 school year, we would have five campuses in the 500 range, four in the 600, and Riverbend at 438 as it opened. Also included this information, again, this is from Monday night's presentation as well, just our economically disadvantaged percentages for the campuses. College Hills at 60, South Knoll 59, and Southwood Valley at 53.9. Rock Prairie, Creekview, and Riverbend, you can see 39.2 to 45.7, and the campuses located in the southern part of the district, Forest Ridge, Pebble Creek, Spring Creek, and Greens Prairie, from 18.1 to 29.3. Our recommendation as far as grandfathering, all students entering 4th grade next year, 1920, whose attendance zones changed, may elect to grandfather and stay at the school they're currently zoned in. So, we'd be speaking of current year 3rd graders, if they were impacted, they could choose to grandfather and stay at their current school for their 4th grade year. Again, I went rather quickly relative to Monday evening, we have all that information posted on our website, maps, the videos, our schedule for future meetings, all that information is available on our website, much more detail than what I've went through here this afternoon. And of course, the community is also, can provide feedback through feedback@csis.org.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item D, when we will have our open forum to receive input related to recommendations for elementary attendance boundaries and their implementation. During this time, public comments are welcome. The board is assembled only to gather information, the board will listen, but the Open Meetings Act prevents us from responding to speakers. Please complete the note card and give it to the executive assistant, those are the yellow cards out there. The public comments are limited to four minutes per person, each person has one opportunity at the microphone regardless of minutes used. Unused minutes may not be accrued by another speaker. The executive assistant will time the comments and alert the president when time is expired. The board will not allow derogatory comments.
Please say your name and your address.
Also, as you begin, please state your name and your address. Do we have cards? And these are called based on the order they were turned in. Amy Herta.
My name is Amy Herta.
Oh, sorry.
We didn't say that.
Yep, you can come up and use the microphone, sorry.
I'm way outside my comfort zone. All right, my name is Amy Herta, I live at 2237 Carlisle Court, that is in Castle Gate 1, and we are on the Forest Ridge side of Victoria. We have two protected paved trails directly from our street to Forest Ridge. The idea, we use these trails daily. I mean, my son is three, I have an older son at first grade at Forest Ridge, we walk home every day. I get to let Jake out of the stroller, they pick up acorns, they pick up roly-polies, I mean, we should be encouraging our families to be walking home from school if that's a possibility. And with us being, possibly being switched to Spring Creek, that entails walking all the way down Victoria, passing many streets of distracted drivers coming, you know, on and off Victoria, they're not paying attention for young children. That's crossing a four-way stop intersection, that's walking up a hill to Spring Creek. And I watched the, excuse me, the online presentation, and the green belt's not a natural boundary. In fact, our pathways go through that green belt. Our neighborhood was designed to include Carlisle Court and Forest Ridge and in the neighborhood. And so, just out of public safety and common sense, I can't understand asking young elementary kids to walk down busy roads, cross busy intersections, when we're already in an established safe path to get to and from school. So, thank you. And I'm sure, I've already emailed most of you, and I'll be glad to leave additional information with you.
I got it.
Thank you.
Hello. I live at 4211 Colchester Court on Castle Gate 1 side, I live on the other side of I actually came to the initial hearings when Spring Creek was built, and I asked, I said, my, I just moved to Texas, I moved here from Las Vegas, and I said, you know, is my home going to be zoned to Spring Creek? Because it's close to the school, like I could, before Bridgewood was put in, I could see it being built. And I was told at the time, no, we wouldn't divide a neighborhood. And we really are a part of Castle Gate 1, and if the current zoning recommendations go forward, you'd be dividing our neighborhood. I also use the same walking trails that were mentioned in the morning, my son is able to bike to school every day, avoiding all of the traffic and road pollution. We see our friends on the way to school, we sometimes stop on the park, at the park on the way back, because that's how the neighborhood was designed. And so, I would ask you not to divide a community and a neighborhood by school. We chose Forest Ridge and the area, or our neighborhood, based on Forest Ridge and the community that is built throughout Castle Gate around this school. So, many of the families that we know and the friends that we have are based on going to that school. And the other thing I would say is, I noticed on the zoning map that if Spring Creek is at 94.5% capacity in an area that's about to be heavily developed, there are new developments going in there, Castle Gate 2 is being expanded, Bridgewood is being expanded, and I'm concerned that, you know, in another two years, when I have a younger son, when he's ready to go to school, it'll be ping pong back to Forest Ridge, because the area is growing so quickly. And since it's kind of a small area that you'd be moving, our area is already developed, there aren't more houses going in that section of Castle Gate 1. I understand moving Greens Prairie Reserve, that's about to be a huge development going forward, but our area isn't. And so, I would just ask that you keep our community together.
Okay, if I mispronounced this, I apologize.
Hi, I'm Laura Burrin, I live at 2320 Caris Brook Loop, I have a 1st grader at Forest Ridge, and I'm here today to express two different concerns that I have with this process. First, let me preface it with saying that I understand the need to go through this process. Anybody who's lived in College Station more than five minutes sees the growth, we see the demand that's being placed on both the city and the school district, and I understand that there are tough decisions that have to be made to accommodate that growth. My biggest issue today is the process that this decision-making has gone through. I'm very unhappy with the public involvement process that's happened here. There may have been some committee meetings that discussed the rezoning that I wasn't aware of, but as far as I know, this was discussed at a school board meeting on Monday, and then we're here at the first public meeting, public hearing here on Wednesday, there's another one on Thursday, and then there might be some more committee meetings that happening. That's a very quick public involvement process. In fact, most of us are here because we were on a listserv that happened, like I distributed last night around 8 o'clock, otherwise, most of us were unaware of this. Now, I did see some headlines about the new elementary school and its impact, but nothing about how that residual impact would affect Forest Ridge and some of the other schools. And so, I ask you to reconsider your public involvement process. Secondly, I respectfully take exception with your demographers' findings, and the reason that I say that is because my family, while we live in Castle Gate 1, we ride bikes through Castle Gate 2 and the Castle Gate expansion on a regular basis, they're protected streets, we probably make some developers unhappy because we tour, there's houses under construction being nosey. I know that there's at least 100-plus houses under construction in the Castle Gate expansion, which is going to at some point impact Spring Creek. And so, when I saw that there's only additional 100 or so additional enrollment projected for Spring Creek over the next three to four years, that can't be right, just by the number of houses that I just see under construction. And so, that concerns me, because at what point are we right back here talking about how we're going to rezone Spring Creek and Forest Ridge? And as the former speaker said, are we just going to ping pong back and forth? So, like I said, I don't envy the decision-making process that you have to go through, it's tough, but like I said, the process and the impact that you're going to have on a lot of us needs some further consideration.
Hello, I'm Susan Fontaine, I live at 5244 Branding Iron Court, which is in the Saddle Creek neighborhood. And my planned discussion is pretty much an echo of what you just heard. We are very happy that Saddle Creek, this time around, was left alone. We want our children to continue going to Greens Prairie. We are unhappy with the process and the lack of committee meetings with parents, with the community ahead of time, before the scenarios are developed. It comes across as not, you know, listening to what parents want and what parents need. And we totally understand that this is an extremely difficult decision, and that the board has many factors to take under consideration. It's very challenging for you to balance everything. But in the business world, for instance, to listen to what the people want, what the parents want, and then be able to explain further, people need to feel that they've been involved. And this is way too quick. It is coming across as a rushed, let's shove this down people's throats without having a chance to get further input. So, today and tomorrow is not enough, the workshops in the future, especially if you've already made your decision, that is not enough of an involvement in the decision.
Podiums are not my thing. So, okay, so my name's Sean Palermo, I live at 2072 Ravenstone Loop, so we are not part of the rezone, however, I do travel Victoria daily, taking a high schooler. I have one at Forest Ridge, but I have a high schooler as well. My thought on this is, I do not see where the green space is a natural defiser, again, that's already been said. Victoria is a major traffic issue at best in the morning. We have a two-lane road that's become a three-lane road, and there are cars that are haphazardly driving, using bike lanes, all of that, and I cannot imagine adding elementary school kids trying to cross. I already see intermediate school kids trying to cross, because there's a bus stop at that lake part, the pond there at Castle Gate Drive in Victoria. And it scares me to death every morning, because I have seen kids almost get hit there already. So, if this proposal does go through as planned, I would hope that there will be traffic, some kind of crosswalks, crossing guards, all of that needs to be implemented, because that road is not safe, period. I noticed in the meeting the other day, there was a comment about the kids meandering through the neighborhood of Castle Gate. Please do keep in mind already mentioned, we do have a designated walking path that's very safe. All of our kids have traveled it, some of them alone, some of them not, but it's there. It's not like they're meandering through the neighborhood. There is a designated walking path from these people's houses to Forest Ridge Elementary
Thank you, guys. Like Amy said, I'm way out of my comfort zone. My name is Genevieve Lee, I'm at 2307 Caris Brook Loop. So, my biggest issue is the zone, the Victoria split. So, there's only two streets on the south side of Victoria, and that's Caris Brook Loop and Carlisle Court, and that's a total of 60 homes. And based on a typical student yield for this neighborhood, that would be about 10 to 15 kindergarten through 4th graders, and that's not enough to warrant moving students from Forest Ridge to Spring Creek for capacity utilization. Using the major roadway of Victoria as a boundary instead of the green belt would be a better idea for the split. Moving 60 homes from the south side of Victoria to Spring Creek also raises issues of safety, like we've mentioned before, and we'll no longer have the safe three sidewalks to Forest Ridge, but instead we'll have to cross Victoria at the busiest time of day with the most traffic, which also means parents might not be able to take their kids to school anymore or allow their students to walk by themselves, which means they'll have to drive their students, which will create more traffic on Victoria.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Fei, I live in 4219 Colchester Court in Castle Gate 1. We just moved here last year, and we bought a new house in Castle Gate 1, and several of my friends are in Castle Gate 1. So, they go to school every day right now, and they play with each other. If you divided Castle Gate 1 into two, like, as two separate communities, it seems like two separate communities, like, my kids and his friends, they cannot like, go to school, the same school, and they may not have that kind of time to play with each other, and I think that's not for the community development, and also not good for the community activities. And the people in the same community, they have kids that can play with each other, they can have more communications and do, like, help for the community, like, build. So, my suggestion is keep the Castle Gate 1 as a whole. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Campbell, I live at 18064 Saddle Creek Drive. I have a son who will be entering the elementary school age in a couple of years. I too, like Laura, want to reiterate that I do have some concerns about the process. I do ask that you guys consider that if you do change or edit these maps in any way, that you allow for additional comments from the community in an open form setting like this before the decision is voted upon. That is a concern about the process. I also am concerned about the ping-ponging. I don't see how these plans will last for long term, given all the new development that's occurring not only in the areas around Castle Gate, but also out towards us in, you know, South College Station. So, you know, I'm concerned that this is going to be made, and then next year or two years from now, rezoning's going to have to take place again, and because of that natural line with Wellburn, then a lot of our areas are then going to be pushed as well. I feel personally that ING and Road is not safe enough to handle the amount of traffic. My understanding is that that road in and of itself is not rated to handle the amount of traffic that is going to be coming up to go to the new school. So, I have a safety concern with the road systems leading to the new school. I do appreciate all of the time and effort that it goes into this process. Having worked in a school district before, I know that it's not easy and that it is a difficult thing to do, it affects a lot of people, but I do ask that please get community feedback before the final decision is made.
Katie Hazelwood.
I was going to pass, I was completely unaware that I could not ask questions, so I have questions.
Okay. There's an email that they referenced, and there you go. There's an email that they referenced in the, there you go. Laura Nicholson?
Actually, never been to one of these, so I didn't know I would have to be talking, so bear with me. I live at 4200 Ludlow Lane, and that's on the other side of Victoria. We have been homeowners in Castle Gate one now since 2007. My son attended Forest Ridge from kinder through fourth grade, and my daughter is now in first grade. I never imagined that I'd be here, trying to argue that there's no sense in splitting up an entire neighborhood. I never thought that this would even be an option, to be moved from Forest Ridge. I do like the idea of, if y'all do choose to go forward with this, I do like the idea of having a grandfather effect. But I also feel strongly that that effect should pertain to the students that are already enrolled in the school, not just third going into fourth grade. Fortunately, I'm not very good at speaking, and I'm pretty upset today. So, that is about all that I have to say. And also, in agreement with everything else that was said in regards to safer passage, yes, we do have to cross over Victoria in order to get to the school, but that's crossing over one street one time, not crossing over each individual block street as we're walking to school. So, thank you.
Corinne Waddell?
Thank you. I live at 2200 Carlisle Court, so my son would be affected from going from Forest Ridge to Spring Creek. I have a special needs son. I specifically chose Castle Gate one because it went to Forest Ridge. He is currently in kindergarten, and he went through the pre-primary childhood development program at Forest Ridge. All of the decisions that I have made for my family are because Castle Gate goes to Forest Ridge. Everything that has been said, I'm not going to repeat it. It was on my list of things to say. But in order to respect your time, I'm not going to say that. I would ask that we maybe reconsider the grandfathering, to, at the very least, keep the students that are already there, especially if they're a special needs child. Thank you for your time.
Are there any more cards? Does anyone else wish to speak? Okay, well, then... Oh, wait, thanks, Carrie.
While we're waiting, I'll go ahead and remind everyone, we've said it several times, but the, the email address that's online, we really do get those and we really do read them, so please send them in. And then, the, it was mentioned earlier, but I'll say it again, the complete presentation that highlights all of the changes, and has the full information about kind of where we sit currently and, and the projections, as well as the projections under the proposed new boundaries. It's, it's all in there on that, and you can go slide to slide and, and look at the exact information that we're looking at. And then, also, there is a, another public hearing tomorrow night, right here at 6:00 PM? 5:30. Sorry, so don't come at 6:00. It's at 5:30. Okay. Megan Lupoli?
Sorry, I didn't fill that out.
That's okay.
My neighbor brought up a very good point, and I wanted to mention that. Again, I, I, I live in Castle Gate, 2307 Norham Drive, and we are on the other side of Victoria, so we would be moving schools from Forest Ridge. And I have a first grader at Forest Ridge, but I also, and he's my oldest, and I have two other children, and I would like them to go to Forest Ridge as well. And so, my concern is, if this goes through, and the grandfathering is a great idea, I think it needs to be expanded to the kids that are already there. And I think you need to think about their siblings as well. Because I'm going to have kids that may still go to Forest Ridge. Let's say you do the grandfathering, and you accept the grandfather to include the kids who are already there. But then, I've got other kids who aren't school-aged yet, but they will be. And so, I'm going to be going to Forest Ridge. I'm going to be going to another new school. That's really complicated. And I've got to drive my kids, so which line do I sit in, in, in my car, for an hour and a half? Because that's how long it takes to drop your kid off these days. So, I just want you guys to know that, as hard as this decision is for everybody involved, there, I think, could be other options, if rezoning has to take place with the grandfathering process, and expanding that a little bit more than to just the current third graders going into fourth grade.
Kristy Wolf?
Hi, my name is Kristy Wolf, and I live at 14232 INGN Road. I wasn't prepared to speak today, so bear with me if I'm a little nervous. As I've listened to everybody come up with their valid concerns, I just have a couple of concerns that somebody brought up a minute ago about the traffic. We live between Capstone and Copey Bridge Road on INGN Road. So, the traffic that they're talking about will greatly impact me getting my child to school. We're currently in Greens Prairie, whether we take him to River Bend or Greens Prairie. It doesn't matter each way. I'm going to be stuck with, with the traffic. So, that's one of my concerns, because when I look at the map, I mean, we are right in the cusp of, or right in that edge of the River Bend School. My son is a second grader at Greens Prairie. We're new to the school district, and through no fault of his own, he, this is now his third elementary school since he started kindergarten. This is the first time since we've been in school that he's excited about school. He is so proud to be a Greens Prairie Mustang. I can't even begin to tell you the difference that it has made. When we purchased our home in this, we started the process this fall, or this past winter, trying to purchase our home, we did it because of Greens Prairie. The, the reputation that school has, the people we had met from there, parents, faculty, all the same, everybody had amazing things to say about it. When I found out that there was a new school being built just right down the road from us, my heart sank, because as a mom, I can't imagine telling my child, "Again, you're going to a new school. You're going to have to make new friends. You're going to have to go through all of this again," because it's, it, I just can't. So, I do ask that you all consider this, you know, like everybody else has said, the grandfathering for the district and for the students. Next year, he'll be a third grader, but he's only got two more years, and he's already looking forward to being at Pecan, Pecan Ridge? The, the, he knows it all. But the intermediate school and the middle school, I mean, he's got his whole future mapped out, all the way up until he gets to high school, so, um, so with that. And then, the other thing is just, you know, again, if y'all could provide more opportunities for, for parents and the community to, to speak up, that would be great. My husband was unable to make it today, and he's not going to be able to make it tomorrow. But I know that he also has some, some valid concerns that he would want to share. So, thank you very much for your time and consideration, so.
Elaine Fivza?
Hi, my name is Elaine. First of all, sorry about my English, I'm not American. I just moved to College Station one month ago, and I chose my house because of Forest Ridge. And now, until now, you don't split my, you split my street in two different schools. My address you don't change, but, until now, because I'm seeing all the, the ping pong and the stuff that you are talking about. But thinking about a kid in third grade, in going to fourth grade, okay, they can continue at the school. But about the brothers and sisters, in second grade and first grade, "Oh, your brother can continue in this school, but you cannot continue anymore." It's hard to say something like that to one child. It's not easy. "Oh, you are not protected to continue in this school." So, I think you guys need to think about this, not protect only third grade going to fourth grade. You need to protect the brothers and sisters, or to every, every child that is enrolled in some school. It's, I move a lot because of my husband's job, and I know how hard is moving back and forth kids for them, their schools. So, thinking about the kids also, please. You don't, you cannot continue only to thinking about new schools and a big school, if a lot of kids are not, thinking about the kids that are growing with this changing. Thank you.
Any more, Carrie? 5:30 tomorrow night, right here. And feed, feedback at CSISD.org. Thank you all for being here. We're adjourned.